All right. We need a motion to reconvene.
I will make a motion that we reconvene.
Thank you. Are in favor? All right. Okay, let's go to 8E, Alberta Environment and Art. We have the possibility to meet with a minister during the AUMA conference. The item that could be brought forward is something to do with a creek and remediation, but maybe not so much as we need money as...
We need approval.
No.
Which is true, we do.
Yeah, we need both. But what we need is maybe to pitch a case that in a small town it's difficult to divert your MSI towards a creek remediation when the MSI that we're using is for utility projects that will last 50 years, when this we're really at the mercy of the elements and we might remediate and all of a sudden have another issue within four, five years. So it's money of the taxpayers, it's maybe for us not as well spent. So I think maybe what we need to help them understand is that the resiliency fund needs to be built up in some ways to allow small communities not to put their utilities works on hold when we really need that first. But we also need the creek to be looked after, not to cause further issues down the stream. Does that make sense?
With that in mind, I'd make a recommendation that we have our administration develop an agenda and send it off to this Yvette.
Get on the calendar.
And be on the calendar for the September 24th meeting with the minister.
Thank you. Are in favor? Thank you. All right. So it's not an easy case, but I think the more we beat, the more we beat on the drum, the louder it will be heard, I guess. The strategic plan, 8E, if you read your background there, you could see that administration needs some feedback somewhat regarding four, five items. And maybe Jeff, I will let you deal with those items. This way we can satisfy that.
I want to mention one thing on here before you go there. It says it was updated last September the 4th. Wasn't it September 215 or 214?
Oh, no.
Was that dated just a few days ago?
It's constantly.
Oh, okay. All right, that was just a question they had.
Okay, referring to councilor, is when we had our strategic plan in...
Yeah, 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 sorry.
That's what took me off.
That's what you were saying by the way.
Yeah. No, the date is what it's opened and worked on.
Yeah, okay.
I understood what you were referring to.
Yeah, that's all I was asking.
I've redone this for a lot of selfish reasons, but I want, when I got looking at the strategic plan, with all respect to how it was laid out prior with Marion, I feel it's lacking in a couple areas. And one of them is, again, I say this selfishly, but at the same time, the crosshairs are on me. It's in the accountability of completing the items. You should be evaluating me based on what's being done out of this plan. This should be a key part of my evaluation. The problem I had is I, when I took over and started going through it, is I don't quite have a finger on what completion means to you as a council.
Right.
So for me to say that that one is done, I might think it is, and you might not think it is, and that's going to cause issues. You're going to think I've left it offered. So for the sake of time, you know what, council, we may not be able to hit all of these tonight, and this is a working thing that we're going to continue to work on, but there was a couple I just wanted to get some feedback. And again, you'll see this is in a very different format altogether. But we had a few things, if you go to 5E, which was explore revitalization and beautification. I want some direction on what, what you feel is results in success, or that we've met this goal, or we've at least exhausted the goal. One of those things, what can I do to consider it complete? Because that's the end I want to work towards.
Okay. I think what Jeff has done there for the metrics, which is measurement of success, he proposed two ways of looking at it. To have the proper policies in place regarding beautification, that is one good thing, because we drive those policies also. And the other one, to have a physical improvement on one item that we had, we had mentioned, which was the fountain on Main Street. So I think there is values in those two metrics, and I just need your support or ideas.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Rational for the activity for the beautification. Ensure the town policies are complementary to communities and Bloom criteria and categories. Now, we have this, we have this award.
It said 5A.
5A.
Okay, we're dealing with 5E right now.
Yeah, that's okay.
But you want to look at 5A, okay.
I do. We have this, we have this thing called Garden of the Week, or Yard of the Week, something like that. What's the criteria for that, besides Lloyd going around taking pictures?
Well, it's not just Lloyd. There are different people on the committee are the ones who are assigned to go and judge the various yards. My wife is choosing one coming up right away, and you've chosen one, and the other guys have chosen, so it's not just one person that's doing it.
There's about six or seven citizens in town that are doing it.
Yeah, they're all working on it together. So it gives you a good cross-section, so that you're not having the same guy doing it all the time thinking, oh gosh, you know, I gotta get a place to choose. They're really working on having a beautiful yard that looks very nice in our community, that showcases our community.
Now, the reason why, the reason why I'm suggesting this, and I'm always suggesting this, that one yard a week isn't going to cover the amount of beautiful yards we have in this community.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we need to have two or three yards of the week.
Counselor, the question is money. You cannot, you cannot put the picture in a paper without a cost.
Well, I'll tell you something, Mayor.
If you have a pocket of money, great, we'd love to do that.
I still think we need to recognize those citizens who are making their yards as beautiful as they can.
I totally agree with you. I couldn't agree more.
And we're not going to do it in eight weeks in this community.
Well, you know what, counselor, your next assignment would be beautification committee.
Well, if we have, if we have this kind of money in our budget and reserves, then we better start stepping up to the plate and saying, hey, let's put an extra $5,000 in this Communities in Bloom.
I couldn't agree more.
Can we keep that for budget review and then talk about it and make a note? Let's keep a mental note of it. Because right now, the budget for the beautification committee is about $3,000, $3,500, about so, plus the donation which is beside and beyond. And the town also gave a lot of in-kind beside and beyond. So that committee has a fair chunk of money, plus we have a lot of volunteer hours that have never been there. So there's something else. Can we, can we go back to 5E?
One more comment.
All right.
I want to make this, because Bill, you can vote for this, that those committee members are finding that there are people that have beautiful yards that are being asked to be recognized, and they say, I was already recognized a couple of years ago. I don't need to be recognized all the time. You know, so, and I know my wife went to choose one, and they said, ah, you know, it's beautiful, but it's not where we want it yet. And so they said, no, we don't want you to do our yard. You know, so it's not an easy task.
So let me ask, to move a couple of these quickly on 5E, do you want the committee assigned still to bring recommendations on policy, or do you as council want to take that on? That would give me some indication of how we want to approach it. Do you want me to start bringing it CCW when we have a chance, policies related, or if we don't get recommendations from the committee, do we leave it to sit clandestine for the time being? How would you like to approach policy review for beautification?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to apologize a little bit. In 5F there, you mentioned that, you know, that you asked the Communities in Bloom to make recommendations, you didn't get any. And somehow, that got lost in the translation. There was, there was one time it came to the agenda that we should make recommendations, and we thought, yeah, we need some time to do that, and we asked for it to come back, and then it came back kind of in a different form, like they wanted, said, well, we'll bring policies that relate to Communities in Bloom, you know, policies and bylaws and comment on them. And, I mean, that's good, but I don't think that was the intent.
Okay.
And if we were, you know, to get a clear direction, I think with the Communities in Bloom Committee, I think there's something that Communities in Bloom could, could do, you know, to look, look at each of the Communities in Bloom categories and, you know, make some recommendations on that. You know, not that we're opposed to anybody else making suggestions as well, but I think the Communities in Bloom Committee would be capable of looking at those categories and bringing them forth.
So is everyone comfortable if we leave that at the committee?
I thought that was what their purpose was. Well, so, yeah, I was just going to say, maybe there, what it would, what it would say is to bring, to bring recommendations, to bring to council the recommendations of that committee. And then once you've done that, you can say, hey, done. And then that would be a completion item for you.
So that's different to do.
And then that keeps you kind of over top of, until they do it, you're still...
We'll make sure that the expectation's clear there, council.
Yeah.
Do you want to touch on another one today?
6E, all I want to touch on is number three. One of the goals council wanted was to get some planting fruit-bearing trees, and we did that for year one. I'm not clear if council wants that to be an annual thing, it's an ongoing, or if we hit a certain dollar amount or number of trees and it's done, or do we just plan for that on an ongoing basis? So I was looking for a little direction there.
For me, on that particular issue, I just think the citizens, me as a citizen, I'd love it if the town would release a list of those locations, because ultimately, the town isn't planning to harvest, right? We're kind of leaving it to the citizens. So the citizens knew, hey, when the apples are ripe on these trees, go get them, you know? And then if there was a map just showing, here's where you can go and find, you know, we put some berries over here, we've got some, I don't know what we've got.
I think Council Creed wanted an ongoing program, didn't you?
Well, I'm wondering, we actually planted a lot of those this summer. The sarsaparilla seedlings are not going to be...
They're waiting on there.
We planted some things in the community garden that could be harvested immediately, like there was some rhubarb planted there. But I, I kind of had to backtrack a little bit, because I thought, okay, what kind of citizen buy-in are we getting? And do we have any policies related to, you know, how we allow people to...
Harvest.
To harvest them, you know, do we just leave it wide open? Do we advertise? Do we, do we say, you can harvest the rhubarb at the community garden, but we expect you to do a little weeding, you know, while you're there?
Okay.
And, you know, I just, I kind of had to apologize a little bit to myself, and, you know, to say, okay, are we, are we heading out here with, you know, to an unknown target?
Create conflict.
What is going to happen? What kind of citizen buy-in, what's going to happen in the long run? Are we going to have everybody fighting over these trees, or, you know, what, you know? So I just kind of... Kind of was thinking in my little mind here about who's going to, once those sarsaparillas take off, and I don't know how many you've got, but you'd have to be really careful, because there are some people who will go in there and scrub them all down and take them all before you know it.
Yeah, that's true.
And they will.
First, you have to beat the birds.
Pardon me? Oh, yeah, I didn't beat the birds this year. I've got two beautiful sarsaparilla bushes, and they took them all. Last year, I had lots of harvest, but this year, you're only going to beat the birds if you put mesh over, netting over top of them. But once you do that, and you have a good crop, then how do you, how do you keep people from going in there en masse, one group of people, or whatever, two families taking them all? You know? Or maybe they won't, or maybe, maybe...
Yeah, they might, but they might not.
I mean, a lot of what was planted was along the, you know, along the trail, the jogging trail, and I guess our intent was, you know, as people walk there, you know, they, they might want to pick some.
Pick a few lean along the way.
If you got enough, maybe there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a big demand for it.
So how many did you plant?
Actually, we planted over 200, 250.
That's, that's good.
And I've been watching the survival rate of them, and, you know, it's been a hot summer. Some of them, and that's, that's always a frustration when you're planting fruit-free, I mean, personally, we planted a lot, and out of every hundred trees you plant, you might have 10 survive.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's, I think it should be, personally, I think it should be ongoing, but...
Okay. So if you say ongoing...
You're planting more next year, every year, please.
You know, at least, you know, I don't know if it has to be every year, but at least kind of, you know, an ongoing plan.
Because there'll come a point where there is a certain critical mass where we got to kind of stop.
Yeah, I mean, well, you, you need to figure out what direction you're going, and like I say, I had some reservations myself, like, you know, what...
And there you go, plant some cherry trees.
Yeah. Oh, we did, I planted cherry trees.
Okay. So what would be your recommendation for council then?
For, for the, for the metric, or for...
Just for the metric, do we plan for it the next year? Do we budget for it? Or we did it this year and it's done? Or is this a good experiment?
Or do you want to do it every second year, at least to try to see what happens?
Maybe we don't have to have that amount. I mean, it was, it was a lot, all in one year, and like I say, the survival rate, because it was a hot summer, but I think there should be, you know, some budget, you know, some budget.
I agree. I like the idea that we have not a, not a huge amount, but... But at the same time, we need, we need some metrics that we can say, okay, we did it, this got done.
Counselor?
I think we should have some budget there that we can take them on to the didn't survive.
And replace them.
And replace those, till we get to a specific number.
Yeah, to a critical mass, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
One other thing, under the 6C, we have a group in town that has set up a seminar on how to get a better garden.
Right.
And I think that's something that's come about from people's interest.
Right.
So I think that is something that's measurable, that we can say that's actually happened.
Right. Even the attendance to seminar, good. Anything else you want to discuss regarding that item 6?
Well, one thing that I thought of when I, when I saw these, you know, the metrics, but I didn't know how you would measure it, is community buy-in, you know? And, but something like the seminar, other people participating might be a buy-in. Maybe the number of people on the garden growers Facebook site might be a metric you could look at, say, we have this many people on this, you know, interested in this item.
Yes, maybe.
Well, and that goes back to what I was saying about awareness. If I'm joke you public here, and I don't know where these are, I have no idea where in the town these choke cherries are, or apples.
Sarsaparilla.
Oh, yes, sarsaparilla, whatever.
Okay. Well, that is maybe something where we have in the spring, start to create a little bit of awareness in the...
Till they start, till they're really taken up, there's no point in saying, you know, you know, we want to make sure they're actually growing.
We don't want the food in there just yet.
Jeff, do you want?
I'm going to do two more quick.
Okay, go ahead.
17E.
17?
This was our celebrate successes, and one of the tasks was developing an Arts and Culture Week, which occurred in 2014. It is not planning what week's going to happen, whether we want it to or not, but we haven't been working towards any events in 2015.
All right. So we just had the power committee where we realized that if we were to do a multicultural kind of something, we would be able to access grant money. And I was wondering if maybe that part of the celebration, we wondered if the moment trail, road show, for example, could be featured during that power, or if we could have square dancing or something like that, invite other groups to, to do entertainment between the two sessions of the power. And that might be a way to attract more people from the town, but also to feature something that is relevant to this area.
So this is another one.
And to invite the theater group maybe also as part of it.
So this goes back to his success that it's a reoccurring event every year? Or is it, we tried it, it was frustrating on a whole bunch of levels, and we're never doing it again?
Well, my point of view, maybe we need to carry on, because art is very important, very alive in our town. So I really think if we can integrate it with something else in that, but I can't tell you exactly if it will be this year or next year. I can't tell you that.
Yeah.
So at this point, we need to have another meeting before we can even come to bring something to the table.
Yeah, Jeff, when you put the metric down, I wonder, were you thinking specifically of the September Cultural Week, or, or does it have to be, you know, during that timeframe?
I guess it doesn't have to. The conversation when we started this was that that was designated provincially as Arts and Culture Week, and do we create a bunch of events that piggyback on other things happening? The Remington does activities, they'll have something for sure. So whether we do anything or not, Arts and Culture Week is happening. I guess the better question is, are we making programming to contribute to it as the town?
Well, and really, the week, I'm even wondering if the month is the best. For example, with that power, we realize the conflict with everything that's going on on the reserve and in town is too much. We don't have the energy, we don't have the people, we don't have what we, the resources we need. So we were thinking of moving in in July, where we don't have activities in town, and create something that could attract people. So is September, because it's designated as a, is that the metric you want to assess? Or is something else during the summer months? Because if you take it in September, then you have to do programming towards it.
Have to worry about it.
And you're in the middle of a lot of things going on in September.
A lot of, I was on the, I was on the ad hoc committee for 2014, and two things. First, you know, a lot of what we were trying to do was surrounding a grant that we didn't end up getting. So that's fine, we still moved forward on what we could do, and we had it, and it worked. I mean, we had culture, we had, you know, and, but without that ad hoc committee still going and still meeting, you know, like this, well, if we're going to move forward with it, and I do think we should, we need to designate it to some committee, just so that they know, hey, this is an expectation, right? So I don't know if that's FCSS, I don't know who that would be. But if we're going to keep doing it, and I believe we should, I think we should definitely assign it out, and then just kind of get a report back on how that's going.
There is another thing we can do, FCSS does a volunteer week in September. Could art and culture be part of that volunteer presentation? That's another idea.
We had a band last time, didn't we?
If council wants it as a recurring thing, we'll try and put things in place to make it happen. I just wasn't sure after 2014 whether...
I think so. And it's only a matter of time before we do end up getting either the small grant or the big one, depending on what we, because it rotates, and that'll come around.
In regards to the arts, when does the Carson High School do their art show?
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year, okay. So we could tie that into that. It'd be nice if there was. But what about, about Jared, Jared Scott, Jared, is it Jared?
Yeah, he only does his show after his students. He's just starting up in September.
Yeah, so it's kind of early for him, in that regard.
But he could work this year for something next year.
But doesn't mean, doesn't mean that we cannot team up with a high school or with other thing.
Well, it's on ticket.
There's, there's good idea there. So can we give it to administration to come?
So it should be a recurring event?
Yes.
In some fashion?
Yeah, okay.
You know what? Real quick on 19E, I'll skip one of them, because I didn't get your dinner, so you're going to want to get out of here. 19E, you wanted to present to the seniors, and we haven't done that for a while, and so the question is, do we want to set a minimum amount of presentations a year? Is it just annually? Do we want to talk to them that we're always there twice a year? If I just had that number, then I can calendar it, but I'm not sure what you think would be appropriate.
I personally think no less than twice a year.
Yeah, no less, that's the same thing.
We all can do it. And we'll talk about this a lot more probably in our planning session in the winter.
Yeah.
I just think you mentioned that FCSS Committee has talked about having some kind of a senior symposium this fall.
That's right.
And so that might be something that we'll, we'll work into that.
That'll count.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, great.
We're going to pick this away little bits at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go to 8F, which is the item that was added. The letter is on the front of you. You have that letter that should have been wrote to the board in July, but was not.
I can speak to this briefly.
I think maybe you want to talk about it.
So, yeah, I'm a little, a little disheartened that Council Barfus isn't here. He's our solid waste representative. But essentially, what happened, I'll just give you the background. In McGrath, they got the bid to increase, for the Chinook Foundation as a whole, to increase their facility, they got funding and everything, and they expanded, they purchased some nearby land, they wanted that whole, you know, what is it, block, city block and things. So they purchased, sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, in McGrath. So that's, yeah, they're expanding Diamond Willow. And so they ended up buying one, potentially two, kind of old derelict homes that just need to be torn down. And of course, the tipping fees on a whole house going to the dump is exceptional, right? And this being, of course, the Chinook Foundation nonprofit organization that relies on tax dollars anyway, ultimately, it's, it's either going to come back to the towns as a requisition for Chinook to help, to help pay for that, or they're saying, hey, could the different municipalities that are part of that just encourage the waste authority to waive the tipping fees? And then, but, you know, again, that goes back to, we're already at our limit on tonnage and stuff. So it's kind of a problem. We, as an individual council, get to decide what we, what our take is on it. If we would rather encourage our waste authority to waive that fee for that nonprofit, or if we'd say, no, that nonprofit, heat it up, and, oh, we understand, and that'll probably come back on us as a requisition at the end of the year. So that's just kind of where we're at with that.
Counselor Pivoy, if you don't mind me, say something.
This is down for him.
Yeah. Counselor Benry, do you want to talk also to the, no? Counselor Burns, do you want to talk to it? Counselor, you all want to talk to it? Okay, go ahead. Maybe we'll start with you, Counselor.
Maybe what they should have done is go hold the fire department and have an exercise in burning.
You know what? Maybe not the bad idea.
But there's still waste there, dwell, the like foundation cement and...
Yeah, but you'd still have, it's 90% less than what you would with a new house.
That is an idea I'm interested in.
Actually, yeah, I just, the question, I just want to question, nothing has started at this point, right?
I, yes, I think...
Have they started?
I think the first house has been taken to. Yeah, the first house has been given out.
It's down, okay, that's, that's what I was saying, because it kind of relates to what Council Edmund was saying, is that if there's other options, rather than just taking it to the, you know, to the landfill, they might should consider some of those other options, even salvage.
Okay, that's, that's an interesting...
I think a home right in the downtown corridor surrounded by residential, a home on fire would not be easy to approve. I mean, even for us, right?
Whatever.
If someone in the town said, hey, fourth and fourth, we're going to burn all those houses. I don't think we'd get approval from the nearby neighbors.
Counselor Pivoy, are you going to give us some sort of checks?
Mine's on the same line as Council Edmund's. Up to about two years ago, the town of McGrath used to have a tradition where they would take, and everyone in the community was invited to bring their wooden trash to the...
Ball diamond.
Ball diamond. And my wife and I went there one year, and that pile was humongous, at least as much as a whole house was there. And they burnt that thing, they had a fire department there, and there was fireworks, they did wiener rows, they did all kinds of things. It was a big communal event. Why couldn't they do something like that?
Okay.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, so we will be able to bring those idea back. What interests me in that letter is that in June, it was sent to Chief Mountain Solid Waste. I do not know if Chief Mountain... I do not know if Chief Mountain Solid Waste had a meeting since then. If they have not, at the next meeting, they're probably going to discuss that. My opinion is that they with their authority, because McGrath is part of that authority, the counselor from McGrath is most likely well aware of this issue and if not, should be made aware.
Mayor McGrath is, he is the chairman of the Chinook Foundation.
Then, then in that case, he should be able to advise his counselor that is on the Chief Mountain Authority and for him to pitch his case to the authority. It's very important because the waste is generated in McGrath. If you remember, when we had all the waste generated in our town, we had horrific issues with Chief Mountain Solid Waste. They did not intend to help us more than they had to. So all the waste is no longer allowed to be taken, first of all, construction waste at the authority. You have to truck it directly to Last Bridge, which is a cost, it's a tipping fee of about eighty-five dollars a ton. So that is definitely an issue, but it should be brought by the counselor in McGrath to the authority. I really believe that that is a proper line of authorities, that should be respected.
Yeah, and my apologies for not making this clear, what they're looking for, what the delegation from McGrath, who's already going to be asking for that. What they're looking for is the other municipalities that are part of that Chinook Foundation to, you know, express their support for that position. We would like the Chief Mountain Solid Waste to waive those fees. If we say, no, we don't want you, we want McGrath to pay, we want, which of course, that'll be the Chinook Foundation, which of course, is all of us anyway. So we, what's our position? Do we want to support McGrath's plea in requesting a waiver of the tipping fees? Or do we want to just say, McGrath, you're on your own, good luck, we hope they approve it, but we're not gonna write you a letter?
Counselor, what has me a little bit intrigued is the following. One way or the other, it's only tax dollar, right? So the whole of the town supports Chief Mountain through tax dollar. The same thing with the Chinook Foundation. So it's half a dozen of this or half a dozen of that? At my point of view, I don't think you will find support at Chief Mountain. Because it is an expense that is incurred by the foundation and will be incurred on the taxpayers through requisition, one way or the other. So the only difference is the size of the pool in Chief Mountain. But Chief Mountain also include the reserve, it also include little town like Mount River, who are so far away from that area that they don't see why the citizens would have to pay for that waste. So therefore, I think the truth of the matter is, let's stack it up and say the foundation and the town that support the foundation will have to incur the cost. I think that would be right.
My concern, Mary, is, is there's gonna be construction waste with the building of the new building.
It all will go to the bridge.
And I'm, and I'm not sitting here wondering why that can be included in the cost
It is, it is part of.
Of building this building.
Well, remember that.
It's part of the disposal.
The budget for the, for the building is X number of dollars, whatever's left over, the Chinook Foundation pays for on top. So their goal is to get it down to, hopefully, where the grant is paying, let's say, ninety percent instead of seventy percent.
But I really think it's a matter of ethics there a little bit.
True.
And I think as much as I understand the requisition.
Well, part of it, it goes back to, are we gonna be over our tonnage again this year?
But that is not part of what we can even support because waste material is no longer taken at the Chinook, at the solid waste management. It has to be trucked out to Last Bridge no matter what.
But I still think the alternatives.
Yes.
Burn up some of that stuff so that you don't have so much tippage.
Yeah.
And why can't, or salvage it, right?
Yes.
There's somebody out there that may want to do that. We maybe go back to them and say, have you considered?
And that's all.
Options.
Yeah, but I appreciate that.
Give them that suggestion, I think that that would work.
Appreciate you bringing that. Okay, nine, financial report.
And Mayor, if I could, does council want us to inform Counselor Barfus of what was around the table here tonight?
Absolutely, I think it should get informed regarding that, it should be a part going to this year. Nine, financial report, you have the July two thousand fifteen. Do you have any question regarding this financial report? Jeff, I have not looked at the line with the allocation for salaries, but I would imagine that will be, that will be corrected on a next budget. Okay, Counselor?
Just have a question for Jeff, as I, as I looked at the financial report, I mean, there's, there's always a few changes, you know, cash is a little down, inventory was up, a few things. I'm just wondering if, if, is this, if this is just, you know, part of normal operations income, what may happen? Or if Hawken has, you know, a different strategy as far as handling the, you know, the finances? Is there a direction that, you know, that our financial department is striving, you know, target that they're aiming for? Or is this just the natural flow of, of, you know, how things go with, with operations and cash and, you know?
Are you talking about the overdraft and things like that?
Well, yeah, like I say, you know, some, some things are down, some things are up, I'm just wondering if there's a certain target or if it just happens by chance.
Well, thank you.
So one thing you may be referring to, if you look at cash and temporary investments, it's a million, one point one million dollars less. And that's because we don't have our provincial transfers, so we've had to cash our investments to use them. To your question, if I understand it correctly, and tell me if I did, Counselor Creed, I don't, it's difficult, let's see. It's difficult to take things in a much different direction because you have this finite amount of money that's budgeted exactly by the council. So it's, it's difficult for me to say that we're going to use it differently than how it's been budgeted. It must be used exactly how it was budgeted, that's the point. But you can see that our investments are very different because we had to cash temporary investments. Hawken's gonna be presenting to you quite a bit over the next little while on utilities and on budget. He's trying to really get a handle on how he wants to deal with long-term reserves and establishing some different reserve accounts. Looking at utility surpluses, but also looking at mandatory reserves every year to save. So he is going to be presenting you with a little different way of looking at our long-term large investments and dealing with amortization. I wouldn't say it's a dramatic departure, but he does have a bit of a different opinion on how he likes to deal with reserves. So that will be forthcoming as we get into budget.
Thank you. Counselor Benry, did you want to ask a question?
I think, I think Jeff has referred to this several, several times in his reports to the council that he's always looking at ways in which to move monies around which are.
Beneficial.
Beneficial to the community. And I think that's the answer to Counselor Creed's question, that I'm sure that Hawken, being the finance director, is in, is in direct counsel with, with our administrator and saying, hey, you know, is this where we have to do? And we have given the direction to our administrator to move that money beneficial. But like he said, he's restricted on the line-by-line budget items that we've approved as, as a council. But he still has some lateral movement that he can move on, on lots of things. And Jeff, I take my hat off to you because you have stood there many, many nights and said, hey, if council needs this kind of money, I'll make sure that you got it. That's a pretty, pretty adamant statement to be making, you know, to council, that, that you can come up with this kind of money, you know? And I take my hat off to you to make that statement because that's a pretty bold statement to make.
Well, it's really to the credit of previous councils, we have cash.
Exactly.
Right, we don't, we don't run in a debt financing situation, every time we need something, we don't have to borrow for it. We're very fortunate.
Last council took some dramatic.
Yeah.
Well, our auditors also said that we have to have a safe, a safe zone, you know? And they've drilled that into, into council's head ever since I was on council before in two thousand seven, two thousand six. And when we had a different auditor and consequently, the council listened. And they, they got money in, in reserves and things like that, so.
When we review utility rates here, like end of month, actually.
Yeah.
Hawken and I met today and he has potentially maybe a little different direction he'd like to go with utility surpluses and the use of grants for utility installations versus utility surpluses. So, yeah, we're, we'll be bringing you a little more, I think, to what you're asking, Counselor Creed. I think you'll have a lot better feel for that here in the next six or eight weeks.
And I think I started to talk with Hawken regarding that, it's very interesting what he's gonna present.
Couple of things, Jeff, I just, general question on the street repairs on Second Avenue. How they come along timewise and are they on time, on budget? And, I mean, they're starting, it looks like they're starting to finish up there and stuff. How financially, how, how's it going?
Obviously, it's not all done, so I can't tell you for surety, I think we're fine. It went longer than we'd hoped.
Okay.
But that didn't necessarily translate to me to went more expensive than we'd hoped.
Yeah, right.
Just that first part just took a long time with all the services, so.
Well, you ran into some stuff too that didn't expect.
Well, we, yeah, we, and along the way, we decided to do different valves and intersections and replace a couple extra manholes. And we're actually gonna go back to the hospital and add a stormwater manhole before we pave. So there'll be, there's a few other things, we're trying to be thorough before we pave, but. Yeah, it seemed to go fairly well, they should have the road fully opened. Oh, that was your husband at seven o'clock who came to pick you up, huh? Everything should be open in the next couple of days, then we have to go back in to do a few small things before they pave, but, no, I think it'll end up fine.
I haven't heard a lot of negative comments from the public about that, I think that people are understanding and thank you for that. Second question. When, when you put up new lights, how is it decided? The spacing and illumination and stuff like that, because I.
Something from First Street and Eighth Avenue, call you today?
Yeah. And they, they'd like to know, you know? And I'd like to know that too, you know, I drive up and down the streets and I notice the new side, the new lights and the old lights and I'm, you know, I look at them and I, I see, you know, differences, you know? Some areas are illuminated, the whole thing, but other areas there's dark spots and stuff like that.
Well, the county did ask us.
So, you know, is there anything we can do to help with that situation?
I can't speak to First Street enough because the lady phoned me at like four o'clock. I just, I can't speak to that enough to tell you what the story is there.
So that's something that you'll be talking, Ms. Leonard, about?
Yeah, I just don't know.
But, but it's probably safe to assume we're just following the regulations and best practices of the province.
Yeah, I mean, we're planting lights on the poles in the spacing required by the construction.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering if maybe some of those lights aren't adequate then?
It's an interesting debate because you have a lot of people that wish they weren't, the light was not intruding and polluting their home and they didn't have to close the blinds. We hear that far more than we hear people wanting more.
Yeah.
The intent, if, not that this is necessarily the topic, but the intent of LEDs is they're very much directed. So they go to the sidewalk and they stop. The old floods just did just that.
Yeah.
They flooded. We had a lot of people saying, I gotta pull the blinds at night because those stupid lights are in my living room. And yet now today, I had someone call and say, well, I used to use it as a nightlight to get up in the night and walk around. So we're not going to please everybody with the lighting.
That's right.
But as far as First Street, I simply don't know yet.
Okay.
Counselor Benry?
Counselor Edmunds helped me on this, but a while back, didn't the province or the federal government come to us and say, we need to cut down the amount of diffusion of our light into the atmosphere? And I can't remember what they called it.
Light pollution.
And so, and I think that's what our, our light electrical department is trying to do is, is to come underneath those situations.
Good, so administration is dealing with it, will report with and talk back to that citizen. Alright, so we have.
I think we should need a motion. Need a motion on the report, please, through the financial report.
All in favor?
I will make that motion.
And all in favor? Thank you. Alright, now we have twelve correspondents, our better government volunteer boards, that's all your information. And if you think there is somebody in the community that should be recognized, please give the name to our administration. And as far as we're concerned, we are ending this portion of our meeting. So thank you to the media and we need to.
I'll make the motion to go in camera.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, if they're in camera, it shouldn't take very long.